We're live, Deborah.
Call the meeting of the public meeting of the Rockport Select Board to order Monday, June 22, 2020 at 5:30 PM. Due to the pandemic, we are still meeting via Zoom. Public, the public can submit comments to Bill Post, whose email address on the agenda or live stream. So the first item, let's see, we have, we have a quorum. Jeff is not joining up or is not here yet, but hopefully will be joining us, Jeff Hamilton. The first item on the agenda is the Town Manager's Report. Bill?
Yes. Not a lot, not a lot to add to the Town Manager's Report that we have submitted last week. But just for those that are watching, the Public Safety Building is one of the budgeted projects that we were talking about for this year was the painting of the exterior trim on the Public Safety Building. And that has been, has been accomplished. As part of that, it was discovered when we took the, they took the gutters down off the front of the building. They were brittle and essentially destroyed. Those were also replaced at an extra cost of about $1,500 that we absorbed within the current operating budget. There was just a small amount of rot on the back of the building, so that was definitely a good thing.
It looks pretty sharp.
Looks much better.
Yeah.
And the new gutters are the seamless gutter so that they run the whole length of the building without any seams in any of, any of the gutter. The library landscaping request for proposals was, went out on June 10th. They were mailed to eight companies and will be advertised in the Curry Gazette as well for our purchasing policy. Because of when they were, because of when it was finalized, there's a little bit of a delay in the article going, in the ad going in the Curry Gazette. But in this week's paper. Those are due back on July 2nd, so that then the board can act on those on July 13th.
And I just wanted to add that we are, that, again, we're on track with the, with the budget for the library and all that. And we're going to be talking at our next board meeting, we're going to have an agenda item to really go into all of that detail. I think the public will be interested, so, but we're just not doing that today.
Yes. So the infrastructure bond, we are working on those projects, as you're well aware, with the paving being awarded. Looks like probably paved and we'll, we're shooting for the first week in August to have that, have that started. Public Works is busy working on road and getting, getting those prepared for the paving. We're also getting prices for the valve fire suppression system at the town office, the exhaust vehicle exhaust removal systems. We're also looking at the repaving at the Public Safety Building. That will be sent out to bid, I think, this week as well. In anticipation for that, so the, the main municipal bond bank issues funding twice a year in the fall and in the spring. So in the interim, we will be looking at requesting from the, the board award a bond anticipation note from a local bank. So we have money to pay for these projects while we're waiting for the funding to come in from the sale of the, of the bonds. So we do have a bond anticipation note request for proposals out. And that should be back. Think those are due back so that we can act on those on your July 13th meeting, if I'm remembering correctly. As you know, the contract with Rick Bates as the library consultant ends on June 30th. He has asked me if he can continue providing the weekly reports, the weekly construction reports after date through the end of the project at no cost to the town, and I've accepted that offer. I think it makes sense. I think the reports are well received by the public. And to be honest with you, I don't have the time to do them, so he's willing to do them at no charge, and I think that makes sense to continue.
I think that's great. I thank Rick for doing that.
I will. We obviously continue to work with Points North Institute, Camden International Film Festival to launch their drive-in at the former RES site. They are on track to begin that in July. I believe the permit was issued today by Code Enforcement Office. I'm working on a very short lease for them that will outline all of the expectations on, for both parties, just so that we have that in writing to protect their, for their insurance companies and our insurance companies as well. So I should have that wrapped up this week, hopefully. We've been notified that the Schooner-Hare will not be able to dock in the harbor this summer because the crew cannot get here because of various issues with the pandemic. Harbor Master Abby Leonard has been working with them and communications with them, and they will be paying their dock lease so that they can still have the spot for. We won't be charging them, obviously, for electrical or water use, because there won't be any.
Bill, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
So that's going to free up some dock space there. And I wonder if there's any way we might be able to take any money that we get from renting that dock space out to other boats and use it just to kind of give it a payment to whatever occasion.
I might be able to answer part of that. Currently Abby's boat, the Harbor Masters boat is sitting in that spot, which is freeing up face dock space for other activity.
That is correct, and at the same time, the Schooner-Hare, they, they are working with other boats potentially to sublet, if you will, that space on occasion so that it helps them pay for their dock space. So we've, we've talked to them about that.
You know.
The fiscal year 19 audit report, so fiscal year ending last June 30th. Megan Brackett and I, the Finance Director, have reviewed several drafts of that report, and we finally accepted a version of that report, the final version. So as soon as we have the final version, we'll provide that to the board and we'll make a presentation to the board when that's finalized. The West Rockport Fire Station project has, beginning again, so we have a stakeholder group that will be meeting with two-way architects actually this Thursday to review the preliminary program list and some corresponding questions about the space, what we need it to look like and what it needs to contain. So that they can kind of narrow down the focus a little bit. After that meeting, then I expect the, the building committee will be created to begin to meet. You saw the list at one of your last meetings with a couple of residents from, from the West Brockport area that would, would like to serve. We don't have their applications yet for their committee membership, but we're also working on the mission statement for the committee as well. Bill? Oops, sorry, Deborah.
Sorry, Mark, I was just going to say that one of the things that I, Bill had mentioned whether or not we needed bylaws or just a mission statement for that group. And, you know, the building life, with the library building committee, I think we just had a mission statement for instead of actual bylaws, since it's a temporary group. And I just wanted, you know, assurance that any decisions about that would always come back to the select board for final decisions. And Bill has assured me that that can go in the mission statement and will be in the mission statements. Mark?
What time on Thursday and where, Bill, will that stakeholder group meet?
It's a Zoom meeting at 5:30, I believe.
Okay.
Do we have a liaison to that group? I forget.
Mark?
Mark.
We appointed him at the last meeting?
Don't you remember the last meeting, Doug?
No.
Mark, I'll send you out that, that invite. I think I, I think I just got it.
Good, thank you.
Sure. Also, at the last, not the last meeting, but the meeting, the first of, first meeting in June, there were questions as to when the Comp Plan Committee and RES Redevelopment Committee would be meeting again. The RES Redevelopment Committee, so Bill Napier had reached out to the two potential developers for the RES property that provided some information, proposals to us. And they can meet and answer questions, et cetera, after the first week in July. In the meantime, the Chair of the Committee, Amanda Dwellie, has basically been reaching out to the committee members to set up a meeting time. Expect that the committee will kind of regroup at their first meeting before they meet with the possible developers, and they're going to do that by Zoom as well. And then the Comprehensive Plan Committee is a little bit more difficult because of the size of the committee. There's 18 members plus staff for that committee. And because of the restrictions that we have currently in place, we, it has to be basically held by Zoom, whereas the RES committee could meet in, in person because of the size of that. So Bill Napier was working on putting together a meeting with Zoom for that committee at some point after the first week in July, so we can, so we can kind of restart that, that committee as well.
So, Bill, if the Comprehensive Plan Committee wants to meet in person, could they not meet in, say, for example, downtown upstairs?
With the current restrictions in place, we're only supposed to have five people per thousand square feet. So I don't know what the square footage is upstairs. So I'll have to look at that, but, I mean, if you think about it, you'd have to have, I don't think we have 4,000 square feet up there to have a full committee plus two, two staff members even.
Well, that might be, I just want to make sure and.
The other part is that committee may very much prefer to meet by Zoom instead of in person at this point.
Yeah, they might, anyway, yeah.
So we will. We are.
Saying that public meetings are subject to the same restrictions as retail stores?
Public buildings.
Public buildings. That's, that's very interesting to me.
Yep.
Obviously, the significance of what happens in those two different, those places are quite different.
Yes, yep. One other topic that I'll add that's not on the, the written report. Samantha Schaeff from the library has resigned her position. She was a part-time library assistant. And so we'll be filling that position shortly, I hope. That's all for my report.
Have anything additional, Mark?
Good, thank you.
No, I'm wondering about the intersection work. I didn't see Farley there today, or is there a plan?
They were supposed to start this week, back, back with the intersection this week.
Okay.
I haven't heard any different from by builders yet, so.
Okay. Is that going to cause us any trouble schedule-wise for?
It shouldn't.
Okay.
It shouldn't.
I'm sorry, Doug.
Bill, have they started putting in the new streetlights yet? That's supposed to happen pretty soon.
It was supposed to happen after July 1st.
Okay.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't had an updated install date at this point, but I know the material is still coming in, so I see, I see the invoices coming in.
Anybody else? Just looks like it. Okay, moving on. The next item on the agenda is public input and non-agenda items. And first off, I know Hunani Wallace has a presentation she wants to make. Hunani?
Hi, everybody. So, can you hear me? Okay, so on behalf of our committee, Bill, we would like to present you with a T-shirt from the Parks and Beautification Committee. This is the front. And this is the back, and notice you have an extra special one with a pocket right here. And we hope that you'll wear it with pride and maybe come out and work with us one day.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I will bring it down to the town office.
All right.
Thank you. Okay, is there anything else public comment-wise? Do we have any things, Bill, on live stream or your email?
Let me look. Nothing on live stream, nothing in email.
Okay, anyone have any amendments to the agenda? Jeff?
I'm sorry, not the full agenda. I thought we were moving to the consent agenda.
All right, okay, we're now on the consent agenda. Jeff?
I motion that the board approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Okay, Doug?
Yes.
Did somebody try to say something?
Well, I, I was. I am still curious as to why it's called a calendar instead of an agenda.
That's just my typo, Mark.
Well, I think it was there last time, too. I'm not sure.
Old.
Yep.
Okay, so Doug votes yes. Next is Denise?
Yes.
Duff?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Trying to talk to you between dog barks. Next item on the agenda is Act on the Committee Application of Sandy Halbert, Pearl, Pearl, I'm sorry, Pearl, Pearlbut. Sorry. So we have the application for Sandy, and so Sandy, would you like to make, say a few words?
Okay, if I say a few words first?
Yeah. Because I'm the committee chair, so I just want to say that I thoroughly endorse this application. Sandy has been helping out our committee for, since, almost since I became chair last year. She and her husband have helped with a lot of cleanup Rockport, with planting and weeding and any projects we've been working on. And though she's not on the committee, she's been very active on it all already, carrying out, carrying out tasks.
That's great.
So I would just, can you hear me? I, I'm not sure if you can hear me. So, yeah, basically, that's what I was going to say is that every, we've lived here about two and a half years and we have, we identify so much with Rockport, even though we live on the edge of Camden or Rockport, and it's our joy to participate in the town activities. And so I would very much like to serve in this way.
Thank you for your interest and dedication to Rockport, even as a Camden resident. Does anybody have questions, Sandy?
No, I'm very supportive of this. Sandy's been a great supportive member, both from the garden club and the Parks and Beautification. So it's great to have her, have her join.
Right.
I agree, and she's certainly earned her free T-shirt from Rockport.
All right.
All right, I move the board appoint Sandy Hurlbut to the Parks and Beautification Committee for a term ending June 30, 2022.
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, call the question, Doug?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Mark? Mark? I think you're commuting us. He's voting yes, right? Okay, he voted yes. Okay, and I am happy to vote yes. All right.
How it got muted, I'm not sure.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is to act on the reappointments for committees for three-year terms. We have a chart here, which is similar to the chart that we first created last year, which I think works out really well for this. And Jeff has, has his hand up.
Yeah, I'll move the board, reappoint all the board and committee members as presented for three-year terms.
Second.
That was Mark that seconded. Any discussion?
Thank you to everybody who does continue to volunteer.
Yeah, just what I was going to say. Thank you very much. It's great that people volunteer, and it's even greater when they want to re-up again. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, call the question, Doug first?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Duff?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, the next item is to act on the reappointment of David Jackson to the Opera House Committee for a one-year term. Dave has requested that he, that he be permitted to just serve for a one-year term, and I understand that we've done this in the past. Bill, did you have anything else to add?
No, I think you've summarized it well.
I move the board reappoint Dave Jackson to the Opera House Committee for a term ending June 30, 2021.
Second.
Okay, Jeff got that one because he actually had his hand up first. Okay, any discussion? Okay, I call the question, Doug first?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
I vote yes. And thank you, Dave Jackson, for continuing to serve the town of Rockport. Okay, the next item on the agenda is to act on reappointment of town officials for the year 2021. The list is in front of us, and this is pretty self-explanatory. One thing I'm going to say is that, you know, one of the things that we did want to do at some point was send out some, our, some RFPs to some vendors. And obviously, this doesn't stop us from being able to do that if we wanted to switch some vendors.
That's correct.
Doug?
I move the board reappoint the town officials as presented for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2020 and ending June 30th, 2021.
Second.
Any seconds? Any discussion?
Obviously, Randy is on this list. Item E is our agreement with the town of Camden for police chief services. I guess that'll all flow together.
I would hope so.
Do we have any other choices?
Not at this point.
Nothing we'd want to consider.
Okay, well, we could always go back and take them off if, you know, if things go south. All right, call the question, Doug?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
I vote yes. Okay, and the next item is to act on the agreement with town Camden for police chief services. Bill, you want to introduce this?
Yes, sure. So this is a new three-year agreement for services with Camden for the police chief position. And really, the only significant change here is the cost for Rockport has decreased from 4.71% to 37%. And this is, this is the agreement that was approved by the Camden Select Board at an earlier meeting this month.
And that decrease is due to the town population, right?
That's my understanding.
How did, how did they come up with a population total?
I don't know, Mark. I wasn't going to ask because it's a decrease.
No, I just, I just find it odd. I mean, I, I don't know how they could accurately do it, but I, I'm okay with a decrease, too.
I move the board approve the joint agreement between the town and Camden and Rockport for police chief services as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Well, I just want to say, thank you, Randy, for the great job that you do, and I, I am happy to be renewing this contract.
You're very lucky.
I'll just make, I'll just have a reminder again for all the board members when, to come in tomorrow, the next day, there'll be a bunch of documents for you to sign after this meeting. So if you can, if you can do that.
All right. Okay, so any other discussion? I'll call the question, Doug?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
And me a thousand times yes. Okay.
If I might, thank you very much for everybody. I look forward to the next three years, and law enforcement's got some trouble times ahead, but I still love doing this job every day, and I hope to be part of the solution and bring both of our departments to the forefront. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy.
Thank you so much.
Okay, next item on the agenda is vote to sign the Budget Referendum, MSAD number 28, and five-town CSD warrant and notice of election for Tuesday, July 14, 2020. Bill, you want to?
Sure, so once the, in a previous meeting, the board had signed the documents for the budget validation referendum, which was the law at the current time. Since then, the governor's order changed the way that the election can be held, and they do not have to have the in-person budget meeting and then the referendum to validate it. It's simply just the election for the approval of the budgets. So that's why, that's why the board has approved these again, approved to sign these again.
So just for clarification, my understanding is that even though they're having, why second, that this budget is based in and there's no opportunity for changes? Is that right?
That's correct.
And I know that some of us have some comments on this. Mark, I think, did you want to go first?
Well, I, you know, I think we all, I mean, Doug and I particularly one year didn't even want to sign this because, but I don't want to speak for him this year. I mean, that is, we went through a pretty good exercise, thanks to Bill and his leading us into it, to come up with an additional $80,000 in savings in the upcoming budget. It wasn't easy, and some of those things will be missed, and we'll have to make up for it in future years. But we were trying to do the right thing for the taxpayers, which I wish that the schools and the county would have tried to follow suit.
And I echo those thoughts. I, you know, I'm disappointed that the select, that the school district, school board didn't feel as perhaps compelled to sharpen their pencils as the town of Rockport did for our taxpayers. And, you know, particularly in light of the fact that we know that there were some savings that the schools had this year. I mean, I know there's, there one, you know, one example that was cited to me was that the spring coaches were not paid or whatever. So that was a savings to the school district, but it's not passed on to the taxpayers. And how many other examples do we have of, you know, expenditure the school didn't have to pay because of the pandemic? And, and even then, there's nothing passed on to the taxpayers, and it's very disappointing. Doug?
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with everything that's been said. I'll be honest with you, though I've sort of given up on this issue. You know, when I think about it, and I've given it some thought over the past week, you know, the people on the school board are duly elected by the citizens of the town. And, you know, if, I guess if it doesn't bother the citizens and they elect these people, then, you know, why should it bother me? So that's kind of, the only time it bothers me is when people come and complain to me about their taxes. And all you can do is explain to them that, you know, a large part of this goes to the school, and they're barking up the wrong tree. But, you know, again, they're elected by the same people that we are, and so there you have it.
I think it's unfortunate that I think that some people aren't paying attention when it comes to that, and I wish more of them would. Anything else? Okay, so we have no choice on this, so does somebody want to make a motion? Nobody wants to make the motion. All right, since I made all the negative comments, I'll go ahead and make the motion because I have no, because we have no choice. I move the board sign the MSAD number 28 and five-town CSD warrant and notice of election for Tuesday, July 14, 2020, as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, call the question, Doug?
Reluctantly, yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Mark?
Oh, I so want to say no, but reluctantly, yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Yes.
And another reluctant yes.
What percent of our tax dollars go to the school system, Doug?
Well, in the past, it was sixty-seven percent.
I bet that's gone.
I'm sorry. Doug?
Closer to seventy now.
Yeah, I, I figured it was closer, as Denise says, yeah, to seventy. But yeah, it was sixty-seven a couple of years ago or last year. Um, okay, so the next um next item is the Act on Cemetery Committee Recommendations. And um, do you want to, see, is Linda still with us? Or no, she's not with us.
I, I anticipate that she's probably trying to join in um from her laptop at the office, but I can, I can speak to this and Denise probably can as well.
Yeah, I can chime in if we have questions.
Yeah, so from my understanding, um, there are basically two changes to the cemetery rules and regulations that the committee is recommending. And basically, what, what it all amounts to is the size of the monuments or markers for the grave site. And I believe this is in relation to a, a potential request to have a very large, oversized monument placed in one of the cemeteries. And so the, the recommendations uh that you have in your packet, um, I, it's a little hard to have them on the screen here, but um they want to have the changed language that would say that the maximum size for any above-ground monument shall be a maximum of three feet across, three feet high, and ten inches deep. You see some of the pictures in your packet, so you see some normal size. And then also that um markers shall not exceed twenty-four inches by twelve inches by four inches for a single grave. So again, this was basically in response to a very large monument that was something like, I want to say ninety inches. It was huge.
And um, can I just point out that in the text, the change to paragraph C on the monuments, that I think there's, there's a typo there. The second line, it says foundations must have a foundation four feet deep. It shouldn't be four. As long as we're changing that section, we ought to catch the typo.
Yeah, we'll make sure the typo is corrected.
Um, a motion and a second for, so we can discuss it.
I move the board approve the changes to the cemetery rules and regulations as recommended by the cemetery committee.
Okay, Doug, second to discussion.
I, I do have a cemetery discussion item. Uh, Denise um and Bill, two years ago, the lanes were supposed to be uh done. I think there's still money in there. I, I believe they haven't been done. I'm just putting that in there now, even though it has nothing to do with the changes.
Are you, are you referring to Stevie?
Stevie Cemetery, correct.
Yeah, we, we ran into an issue with one of them where there's a very, very wet spot um that we couldn't really continue the lane that they had started. So that, that was an issue. So we're kind of re, reworking the plan, if you will.
Okay, so there is, yeah, okay, good. Thank you. Yep.
Okay, any further discussion?
Yeah, uh, maybe uh Denise or Mark or Bill can tell me. So it would appear that we haven't had any real size limitations in the past. Is that correct?
That's right. Um. Yeah, this is the first time for the regs to have a size. This was a size recommended by Dave Farley, who I think has been the Sexton for a long time. He's, I think, retiring and isn't the current Sexton, but he attended the meeting. And when it was the proposed monument that was going to be so large and would sort of tower over nearby grave sites, you know, it was determined necessary to have some sort of limit. And this appears to be a pretty generous size, the three feet by three feet by ten feet.
So pretty much the current monuments and, and memorials, they've been more or less within this?
Well, I can't say that. I, I haven't walked, I'm not that familiar with what we currently have. There's probably some grandfathered ones that are
Yeah.
at least taller than three feet.
But it's still considered, as you said, a generous size.
Yeah, yeah, it really, I, I forget the term. I learned a lot at just this first cemetery. This is the first time the cemetery committee's met since I got on the select board. Tablet, that's what you typically call the kinds of monuments that you see. So it's a very generous size for a tablet and then still has some room for um, for other choices beyond, you know, a typical grave mark, grave monument. And then the markers are just the flat ones that go right into the ground.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, Doug, question. Doug first.
Yes.
Jeff?
I support the recommendation of the cemetery committee, yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, so the next um item on the agenda um is to act on EMS evaluation and partnership with the town of Camden and Penn Bay Medical Center. So I will turn it over to Bill to lead this discussion.
Yes, so in your packet, you have um the proposal for the evaluation education effort as well as a white paper, if you will. It was put together by uh Kevin McGinnis, who will be like the, the main consultant uh for this work. You'll notice that in the, some of the information, it talks about the fact that the normal anticipated cost for this type of study would be fourteen thousand dollars. But that would be in consideration if it was one community that would be targeted for this, for this uh effort. In this case, obviously, we have basically four communities with Lincolnville, Hope, Camden, and Rockport. Um, and then we have the addition of Penn Bay Medical Center also, uh, because they'll, they'll be looking at the inter-facility transfers and what impact that has on the uh EMS and ambulance system. So the, the, the cost for this project is eighteen thousand dollars, and that is to be split evenly between the three partnering um entities. The town of Camden has already approved their six thousand dollar contribution uh at, at a meeting early this month. And Penn Bay Medical Center has also approved six thousand dollars to contribute towards this project, which leaves the six thousand dollars for us uh left to contribute to this. I think at this point, I just would turn it over to Tom Judge, who is the executive director of Lifelight Maine. Um, and he'll be the unpaid facilitator, I guess, is the best, uh, best term for him. I mean, he can describe it in uh more detail and you can, and answer any of your questions that you might have.
And so, sure, thanks, Bill, and, and um good evening all. Um, the, the, this is, the process for this, eh, this is not unique to the local communities. There are some very big challenges with uh EMS agencies all across the state and, and really all across the country. And, and certainly rural areas see that more. So some years ago, the uh, the working group for the National Association of EMS Physicians and the National Rural Health Association, uh, we, we published a paper called EMS Rural and Wilderness Agenda for the Future. And part of that was to, to build a process like this to, for communities to really look into and in a very public way, uh educate the community about what the options were, the choices that they have, and, and the costs therein, and the performance expectations. I think that all of us, you know, just we dial nine-one-one and we expect something to show up. And, and I think it's not as clear to most people what it takes to actually make that happen reliably. We use this process, I live down in St. George. I've been involved in the EMS system locally here for close to forty-five years. That uh working at the hospital and, and uh long before Lifelight. And we actually use this process down in St. George about uh eight or nine years ago. And when we were struggling to, to, to see if we could maintain the local volunteer rescue and what we would have to do to get that to a different level of, of performance and expectation. So we hired Kevin, uh came in, did an assessment. Part of the assessment was to benchmark ourselves against other communities in Maine. Uh, we engaged the community broadly, both through survey, community meetings. All those are a little bit more difficult uh when we're dealing with sort of the current um uh having community meetings, you know, public meetings. I think there are some ways to do that around that. But at, at the end of it, the, the community really um came around what, a, a single plan that had support of the entire community, which included, you know, that, that changing some of the, that, that, that town had never contributed tax money to the ambulance before and now was going to contribute tax money and that the ambulance had never charged and now they were going to charge. And there was a series of pieces to that, but it's been enormously successful um to really transform uh what gets down. So I, I think this is good. We asked Kevin, who's kind of the, 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 the person who invented this, you know, has done these, not just in Maine, but around the country. He's put together a team. Uh, Mike Senical is the director of the uh ambulance service that Franklin Memorial Hospital. So they, it's the county-wide ambulance service in Franklin County. It's based out of, of uh Franklin um uh, the Farmington, Franklin Memorial Hospital in, in Farmington. Uh, it's on multiple sites. They use this process to set up that system. And then I, he also engaged Rich Narad. I've worked with Rich many years ago and is sort of a, a policy expert on, on sort of public value and public purchasing um of, of services. So I think it'd be a good team. I, I think we can um pull this together. And the most important thing is at the end of the day, you know, the people of Rockport feel that what, what the investment they're making in a system is, you know, is getting reliable, agreed performance um for the citizens when they call nine-one-one and then for the hospital. Because, you know, the, if someone from Rockport ends up in Penn Bay and then needs to be further transported, there's still a citizen of Rockport that needs a ambulance service um that's going to deliver quality. So we want to make sure that we integrate this um completely. Uh, and there is, you know, some associated work and, and, and Bill and his, his uh colleagues at, in, in his positions, you know, have also engaged conversations with Rockland of how this, so we want to make sure that this, this really works for this section of the county. So I'm happy to answer any questions and I've sort of just helped bring people together around this. Um, and to uh, and I will continue, you know, as, as I've offered to just work as an unpaid person to just try and keep everybody moving forward in the process.
And, and I will say to add to that also that um the project will kick off as soon as it possibly can and it's supposed to be wrapped up by uh the end of, the end of the year. So Kevin has uh made that commitment um so that we can make sure that we have all the information in place uh as we look at what happens at the end of the current North People Health Service contract, which ends June thirtieth of next year. So we should be in good stead, once this is completed, to know what we're going to be doing uh moving forward for planning for budget purposes, that sort of thing. And I also wanted to say that um, I think we looked at probably four or five other consultants, Tom, if I'm, if I'm accurate here, that have done this type of work and uh were essentially turned down by uh those other four or five, simply because they were either overwhelmed with the work that they have. So it's not like we, you know, just looked at one consultant and said, you know, let's have him do the work. Obviously, Kevin is very, very well-versed to do this work in Maine. He, as Thomas said, he basically is the originator of this type of study. But I wanted to throw those comments out there too, because that may be, answer some questions that may uh be posed by the members.
Yeah, and Kevin wa, also was the state EMS director for many, many years. When I was the chairman of the EMS board, um Kevin was, was the director. And the white paper that's attached to it, um, I'm part of a, what's called a Rural Health Action Group. And that has the Muskie as the Main Health Access Foundation, the state. There's kind of a lot of us in this sort of ad hoc group that help the state dealing with rural uh health issues, which include EMS. And the white papers is, is kind of that, that we all contributed uh to that from the Rural Health Action Network.
Doug, you had a question or comment, Doug?
Well, I've just, I had a couple of comments here. Uh, first of all, I've known Tom for many years uh for our time on the Penn Bay Board uh together when I was still practicing. And uh Tom is a very thoughtful, well-considered, uh, I, I value his opinion on these sort of things. I'm also a scanner geek. And as a result of that, I frequently hear the ambulance calls that go out. And I can tell you that the St. George ambulance system uh is always available, always professional, and almost pleasant when you hear them on the radio. So again, I think this is a tribute to Tom and the work he's done down in St. George. Uh, I did have a question about who wrote up the white paper initially, because it wasn't attributed yet, buddy. But I think both Bill and Tom, that this fellow Kevin has uh, has done that. And so that really answers the only question that I have.
Yeah, so the primary authors were Kevin, I, and Andy Coburn um from the Muskie Institute. Um, and then we had, you know, a variety of people um helping do editing from the Maine Primary Care Association, May, Main Health Access Foundation, the Office of Rural Health in the state. But Andy Coburn from Muskie and, and Kevin and I did the white paper.
Mark, I think you have a comment?
Yeah, I was curious. So we're hoping Lincolnville going to be included in this? Or is this just something that we're going off on our own and doing? I mean, are we anticipating a split in the future? Or would they like to be part of this uh evaluation process?
Tom, I don't know if you have any insight.
Yeah, I, I, I think that, that uh, my guess is that, 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 from a, uh, from a study section, uh, it'll incorporate all four towns. And I would hope that the long-term answer continues to incorporate all four of the towns that are in there. The reality is that the, the brunt of the volume of patients is in Camden and Rockport and, and, and the hospital interest. So like, no one's cutting them out. I think the complexity of having five partners do the study and study three, you know, makes this doing, getting all the, the background work of the study more difficult.
I'm, I'm just looking for some extra money coming in to knock our six down a little bit. So that's where I'm coming from. And they were not mentioned, they were not mentioned anywhere in there. So that was my concern, that we were sort of drifting away from what we currently have to something we don't.
Well, I would think that um, that when it comes time to be talking about and considering the options, that maybe there, that's an appropriate time to lift them back in or make sure that they're, you know, present when we present or at least um considered, uh, given opportunity for input when we're talking about options.
Uh, it will certainly get their input and, and Bill is, is working, obviously, with his counterparts in the towns. And the fire chiefs are all talking to each other as well. So it's, it's not, there's nothing that's sort of um beyond this. I, I think it just, from getting the study done, the vast majority of it resides in Camden and Rockland and then the, the, the hospital's interest. And then certainly going forward from a, what, however this ends up with what the system looks like, if there's, if there, those towns are going to play, they're going to have to help pay for the system as well.
So?
Yeah, I, I, that would certainly be our goal. We, I, I think the regional efforts make a lot of sense.
Yeah, so they, the administrators in Hope and like, excuse me, they, they were having difficulty potentially getting funding from their boards. Um, and we felt, meaning we, meaning the hospital and Camden officials felt that it's important for us to move forward with this study for our own determination when it comes to EMS services. And if you looked at the number of patients compared to, in Hope and Lincolnville compared to Camden and Rockport, and the hospital inter-facility transfers, obviously, the percentage is so small um with Hope and Lincolnville that if you, you applied a percentage to the cost of the study, you know, they might be contributing five hundred bucks. And I mean, you know, it was, it was really peanuts. Um, but they are part of the, I think, part of the study and part of the solution too, as we look forward to it. Because there aren't, they don't have a lot of other options, to be honest with you. They, they really need to partner with us um with any type of solution. And they, they fully understand that and, and I think support that as well.
All right, okay, Doug, how does? All right, okay, Doug, how does?
Um, uh, who are the point people at the hospital for this?
Uh, uh, so uh we we they so Mark Faray obviously approved it, but Chris Michaelakis. Um, is is the is the is the point person for the hospital that Mark's asked him to to run this. And there's been a broader conversation, you know, with EMS services in the county and the hospital. Um, for going on for almost the last year, you know, the the fire chiefs had come from Rockport and Camden. Had come to me and said, can you help us? And that's how I got sort of looped into this. And so. There has been a conversation that's gone on for quite a while in the background about what the possibilities might be. But the hospital has a a a big interest and and so uh Chris is the lead guy um from 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 Penn Bay.
So I was invited as the chair to a meeting back in, uh, what was it, December or January uh with um. Uh, with Tom Judge and others. And so um, I appreciate that. Um, all I'd like to say is that Mark and I are both liaisons on this, you know, on the EMS committee issues for this select board. So I just want to. I just want to remind everybody of that. So I think that um there ought to be some select board. Yeah, I'm sure there should be some select board participation. Or not not just at the end, but during the process for both Camden and Rockport. And at the very least, it ought to involve the liaisons.
Uh, absolutely. I I think that the only way this works is if people actually engage. And 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 do the work. And it is a bunch of work that people have to commit to. I mean. While Kevin can get data and they can do interviews and, you know, there's a list of people that's sort of the minimum interview set. Across there, which would obviously include the town leadership that is focused on this issue. Um, but it it has to be at the end of it, if you. It that if you're going to ask the voters and the taxpayers to invest differently in a system. Um, you you have to engage them and as your leadership, um, you represent their interests. And so, yes, at the. At the absolute forefront for this.
Thank you. Um.
Yeah, thank you, Tom, so much for your time.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Well, it's it's I I'm a I've worked a long time in the EMS system and it's it's near, dear to my heart. So. We want to make sure that it's working for patients.
Yeah, I was very impressed with that meeting I went to with you and 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 the process that we're about to engage in. So I have high hopes for that. Um, does anybody else have any questions or comments? Okay, somebody want to make a motion?
I move the board accept the EMS evaluation proposal with the town of Camden and Penn Bay Medical Center.
Second.
Okay, call the question, Doug first.
Yes.
Nice.
Yes.
Yeah.
Mark?
Yes, thank you.
I vote yes as well. Thanks very much, Tom.
Hey, thank you all. Thanks for all the work you do for people. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Look back at you.
Push the wrong button here, okay?
All right. Um, the next item is a discussion item and it is a review of the short term rental regulations timeline. And I would say that this is a short term regulations slash ordinance timeline. Um, Bill has provided us. With a suggested timeline that um would keep us on track for what we had previously said we wanted to do and that was to. Ask any uh proposed um ordinances at least um at the November third election. Special town meeting. Obviously, we can, we can institute regulations at any point, right? It's the um, any needed ordinances that we need to keep on track for.
Well, you'd have to, uh, you'd have to have an ordinance that would create those regulations.
They would give us the authority to to issue those, right?
Yeah, yeah, so.
Not the regulations, the ordinance is my point that is is driving this for the November.
Right, right. So I did um work back through this timeline and it is. Crunched together a bit, so I have moved some things around. For instance, the. What I'm suggesting is that a potential July ninth date for a workshop or more public comments on short term rentals, simply because we haven't. Uh, touched the subject in a while, so I thought it would be helpful to hear from the public. Um, you know, just their comments. What do you, what do you want to see or if anything for regulations? What are the issues with them? What are your comments? Obviously, we had a workshop last fall. Around this topic and received some comments. We've also got some comments through the Facebook page and through emails. Uh, but I think it would be helpful to have another workshop to receive more public comments. Um, and that simply it can be a. It can be a select board meeting if you want, but my thought around that was that it would just be. Either staff, you know, myself and Bill Napower just uh opening up a Zoom meeting and then just. Uh, recording it and listening to the comments and listing those. And then we would provide that summary back to the select board on July thirteenth at your meeting. Um, and then get guidance from the select board after we hear those comments. Um, and again, it's a little crunched together there. Um, but to make it happen, I think we have to do that. And then there would be a quick turnaround of a a couple of weeks or a week and a half and we would uh bring draft. Regulations ordinance to the select board on July twenty seventh for um additional review, comment, uh tweaking. And then the select board would hold a public or workshop again on those draft regulations on August tenth. Um, and then the staff would make changes to the draft regulations after that meeting and bring those back to the select board. For uh approval to be placed on the ballot. So that would happen either on, I've got August twenty fourth or September eighth. If you want to avoid a second meeting in August, we probably could bump it out to your regular meeting date of September fourteenth. And still be in time to order ballots, but I have to check with uh the town clerk about that to make sure. So that's what I've put together. Welcome to comments or suggestions about changes to this as well.
Jeff?
Uh, looking at this, when would be the first time that this select board could get into the meaty discussions on this? I'm looking at, is it July twenty seventh? Would that be the place where that would happen?
Well, I mean, you could, you could look at July thirteenth, you know, to, that would be where you the board could. See all those or hear all those comments or read all those comments that we've gotten um combined from last fall's workshop and then the one potential on July nine. Um, to give us that guidance as to what it is you want us to draft for regulations. Um, and then you certainly at the July twenty seventh meeting could follow up with. You know, what we've actually put together um with some more meaty conversation.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we have that opportunity long before we have to. Get an ordinance in a final format and and ballots as it ordered, et cetera.
Yeah, I mean, it's tight. But that's what that's without having any special select board meetings too. So we could always consider that. Uh, as well if we, you know, if we get into some issues where we have to make more revisions. Um, than I anticipate in the in the timeline.
Great, thank you.
And so you're contemplating that this workshop in July ninth would be handled by you and the staff and not the select board?
I I'm open to suggestions. Um, July ninth is is not a normal select board meeting night. Um, if the select board wants to run this. Um, workshop, I'm more than happy to to bow to to the select board and have you run it. Um, and you certainly could be uh watching that or participating in that as well if you wanted just staff to run that.
And we would be doing this by Zoom?
Yes, because of the current restrictions by the governor's office.
And um, and we wouldn't be doing it in the way that they did the planning board meeting because we've since realized that we have less available. The less ability to have people in the house than we originally thought.
Right. And it, you know, my thought is it would obviously have to be a an invite situation. It wouldn't be an, you know, open because then we risk the Zoom bombing. Uh, issues that we would have. So, you know, I would ask the public to send an email into Diane or or me. Um, to to get the invite for the workshop.
Right, so they'd have to in advance request to say something, but they could always submit something.
And they and they could always, you know, submit written comments or email comments, you know, as well. Um, if they if they couldn't attend the meeting or didn't want to attend the Zoom meeting.
And if they wanted to say something publicly, then they would have to like, you know, in advance and then they would get an email with the invites.
Right.
So how do people feel? Denise, go ahead.
I just wondered, we did have that other workshop. Would it be helpful to have those comments sort of summarized? So that the public's aware of what we're already aware of from them?
Yeah, that's a very good point. We want to be captioned as well.
Bill said he was going to do that. I thought I heard that.
Yeah.
Yeah, but Denise is saying that to have those available, say, on the website or something, so that people see what's already been submitted for comments. Denise, is that what you're?
Yeah, something so they don't have to repeat themselves. I mean, not that they won't, but um. But to be able, you know, this is what we're already aware of for concerns.
Right, so so on July thirteenth, the staff is supposed to provide public comments. Um, to the select board, right? And so those public comments would include. Everything from July ninth as well as what was said last fall, as well as what was noted on Facebook.
Yeah, yeah, and and the email comments and we certainly could put those in a document so that those were on the website. You know, with the notification of the potential Zoom workshop meeting asking for more so that people could see what's already been submitted. I think that certainly makes sense.
Jeff, did you have a comment?
Yeah, real quick on the, if we as select board members wanted to be. Uh, wanted to provide public comment as a taxpayer. Or individual, which meeting would this be most appropriate to do?
I think you could do either or or both.
All right, the July ninth?
Yeah, certainly.
Yeah, that's why. Deborah on the who should run that meeting and how should it be done, I. It it makes it tough when you're trying to wear two hats at the same time. I'm just trying to figure out the best way to do that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we uh we obviously um did the workshop in the fall and conducted the workshop ourselves, but um. But we are somewhat seemingly somewhat limited when we're taking public comment uh when we want to make our own public comment as taxpayers.
Yeah, that's correct.
Um, so then, um, I guess my question to you, we don't have to take a vote on this, but my question is then, is everybody um. In agreement to have staff uh conduct that workshop? On the ninth? Instead of the board? And that's what you're saying too, Jeff, right?
Well, that would then allow us the opportunity to weigh in as a member of public as opposed to. Trying to weigh in and that that may not work where we wanted to.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. Um, Mark and Doug, okay with that?
Yes.
Mark, Mark is nodding, okay.
We have the August tenth second workshop, so I suppose at that point, if we wanted to. Sort of come back in in charge.
The August tenth one is a select board meeting night, so that's what I envisioned there is that the select board would. You would, because you'd already have some draft regulations, uh ordinance, um and you'd have a lot more comments that way. And, you know, I'm not saying that we can't have another potential workshop run by staff to receive more public comments if that's needed. I mean, it. You know, we may have to do that, um, depending on on what we get. Again, it's it crunches the time together and, you know, it certainly is. The the reason I, the reason I figured Zoom, a couple of reasons, obviously, just because of the restrictions we have in place, but it doesn't limit. People that are present, you know, in Maine or or here, if there are people that own property from away, there there are a way and can't be back here, then. We can still respond as well.
Yeah.
And just because I spent my entire life doing draft regu drafting regulations and ordinances and laws, I just want to make them, I'm a I'm a regulatory. So I just want to make sure that our lingo is clear and the intent. So the thing that goes to the ordinance. Any ordinance that we decide that we have to do um will be on the ballot in November. And an ordinance, you know, would would have to be those things that we don't currently have the, that we want to regulate. But don't currently have the authority or 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 it's not clear that we have the authority to do. And one of those things that might be in the ordinance would be um authorization to grant us, um, you know, the authority to issue regulations. And so flowing from the ordinance then are the regulations. I mean, usually you don't draft the regulations and the ordinance at the same time. You usually have a law that gets enacted. And then you draft regulations in accordance with the authority that you've given from the law. So I'm just a little, you're with me on that, Denise? And so I'm just a little unclear about exactly how we're doing this in a way where we're sort of mishmashing the regulations and the ordinance aspect together. At least in the timeline.
And and what you're saying is potentially we could go to the voters to just get the authority. To regulate short term rentals and not get into any of the specifics of what those regulations might look like.
Uh, I would offer that we draft, we get the feedback, we draft an ordinance that includes. The details that need to be managed and that both the town can manage to and the renters can. Abide by all in one big package for November.
And I think that's the, I think that's the intent as well. I mean, obviously, we've been looking at other communities. Um, ordinances uh and regulations um that that are that have been passed. So. I think that's the intent, but at this point, we don't have all of that research done. So that's why in the timeline, it's covers regulations and ordinances.
Okay, but the regulations don't go on the ballot. They have nothing to do with November.
No, but the ordinance would.
The the ordinance would contain the regulations, I think. I I don't think.
Experience of forty years of doing this, no.
I mean, for example, if there was a regulation. Or a caveat that says you have to have fire alarms, uh battery powered fire alarms in in Airbnb, that would be included in the ordinance.
Right, if it if there if you have a part, you know, remember, think back on on what John Viament's point was the other day at the planning board meeting where he was talking about. We don't have anything in our ordinance, in our land use ordinance with respect to parking requirements for short term rentals. If we wanted to have something in there for short term rentals for off street parking. Then that would need to amend our land use ordinance. If, for example, we wanted to apply the business. Tax for personal property that we charge to um B and Bs and other businesses and we wanted to charge that. Just hypothetically to short term rentals, then we would have to amend whatever taxation um authority we have. We'd be touching on different ordinance amendments to do certain things. Um.
Yeah, that's not the way that the other communities have done it. The other communities have done it gen generally with uh an ordinance for short term rentals that point that. Spells out what regulations are in there. And you you have the the board, the town has the authority to do that by ordinance, by home rule. The land in the land use ordinance, you mentioned that, yes, there could be a way that you could amend the land use ordinance to include parking requirements for short term rentals. But you can also do that in a short term rental ordinance. So you all of the regulations you can adopt in that short term rental ordinance. And I would suggest that we do that so that they're all in one location, so that they're much easier to enforce instead of. Putting them into various other ordinances throughout throughout the town's ordinances.
There are certain things that I think that we as a town have the ability to do now that we um in terms of regulations that we may not actually implement it. And so for the other, the other aspect of this is you don't want to put something out for a vote. That restricts the authority that the town already has.
Right, and we wouldn't do that. We would, yeah, we would obviously during this discussion will. Will point those things out that are already under control of the town. It can't have been, you know, you know, by. Life safety code or whatever, whatever it may be that we already have the authority to do, but we wouldn't include those. But we would certainly have a list of those things. So that everybody understood that these items are already under the authority of the town and can be regulated, but wouldn't so wouldn't be part of ordinance.
Well, anyway, I'm not sure that I agree with what the other towns have done or or that that's what all towns have done. And so. I I'm just not there yet because, you know, a lot of decades of experience tells me that things should go a different way. But I mean, that's why we're entering this process. But I just want. Everybody to, you know, just keep in mind this whole idea of regulations and the different roles that both of them historically usually play. Um, so anyway, uh, it's all subject to discussion. Doug?
So help me understand that, yes, Deborah, in a perfect world. What you're saying is that at some earlier point. The town would. Ask to have an ordinance passed, and the ordinance could be very simple. It could just be that. The town grants the select board. The ability to write regulations to address short term rentals. And so in the perfect world, that would be passed. And then the select board would take up. The various regulations, the minutia, get down in the details, and those were just regulations. Part of the idea there would be that it's a lot easier to change regulations if it's granted to the select board. Than it is to go back and change in ordinance if it's been passed by the town. Is that?
That's exactly right. And I and I think that, I think that, you know, in my view, it's not, I mean, it wouldn't be quite as general as what you, is what you just said, because, I mean. You know, you you want to, you want people, you you want to. You know, you certainly want to have the broad contours of what, you know, what the what the town wants, the town is passing in an ordinance in terms of brown, broad contours. You know, that you're making, let's say that you have definitions between ho- I'm just hypothetically here. You have definitions between hosted and not hosted. That you that you may have have. You may require that there's a regulation and registration. Of short term rentals. You may then say that the select board has the ability to. Regulate how many short term rentals or how many short term rentals in a various district. Can occur from time to time, that they'll go through that regulation, you know, process. So that over time, if, you know, if it turns out that you can have more short term, or you're getting inundated with short term rentals someplace and not in others, or you're just. You know, whatever that that you can apply exactly what you just said, Doug, the ability to adjust that as time goes on. It's a lot more. You know, you 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 try to take care of the basic rights in the ordinance. But you really leave more. Flexibility for modifying it to the select board.
Yeah, and that certainly makes a lot of sense, and I get that. I guess we're sort of going at it fast afterwards. But again, maybe with the time constraint that we're facing. Is there any way? To accomplish what you hope to accomplish?
Well, I think it's a lot easier, frankly, to do it the way that I'm suggesting it, because you don't have to have everything completely decided and and written out and and in an ordinance. The time that you go to the polls in November. You know, so that's. Jeff?
Well, I I'm in a little bit different place. I am. All about trying to get the details included in an ordinance because my concern is. To put, you want to put an ordinance with the details in front of the voters so that. They know what they're voting on as opposed to any ambiguity that might. Occur. I think that in the timeline that we have, even though it's tight, we can. Get the job done and we'll be ninety five percent of the way there. Regardless, and to your point earlier, Deborah, we just make sure that we don't limit. Our current ability to regulate and manage. In any other way. And I think Bill and. The legal team of Rockport can figure that one out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so I think then that we're generally good with the primary, it sounds like.
Thank you, Bill. This is.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Bill. We'll all send a draft of our versions of the ordinance tomorrow.
And you work it out and just come back with sort of all of our favorite.
Yeah.
How long will you have your help, Bill?
What's that, Mark?
How long will you have your summer help there?
Oh, the intern?
Yeah.
She's there till mid mid August.
So a good chunk of this then I. Presume will be done by her?
Her as well as Hannah Sisk, who's works for me and Bill Napower. So I mean, they're they're basically doing the research and then they'll be drafting things based off the comments from the select board and from. Obviously, members of the public and they'll they'll start drafting that stuff. But obviously, Bill Napower and I are the ones that are overseeing the project. And weighing in on it as well and making sure that everything is. Put together the way that it should be, so.
So part of their research will give us some idea of what other utilities have done?
We, yeah, we've got a ton of that stuff now, and if the board wants to see that information, we certainly can send that out to you.
Sooner than later, I would like to see it. And I also think that, you know, internally, you guys should be maybe thinking about a decision tree, sharing our chart. That, you know, there are certain decisions that the board's going to have to come down to in terms of what they want, you know, what they would like to propose to the voters, whether, you know, when it comes. Hosted and unhosted, when it comes to, you know. Parking for the hosted or parking for the unhosted, or, you know, I mean, there's a number of those categories or issues. And I think that if maybe they do it in terms of a decision tree or a chart or something like that, it's going to help us deal with some of these issues.
I would very much like to see the summary of the previous workshop. Prior to. The July thirteenth. Meeting. I I don't know if that means to go out to the public or not, but I personally would like to see it before then if we could.
As well as Facebook comments, right, Doug?
Right.
Yeah, no, that's easy. We'll put that together pretty quickly.
So I think that's good. I think then then give us all of that, you know, background information that you guys have sooner than later so that we can be doing our own review of this all along the way. Okay. All right, so moving on, we have. The future meetings, town office closure. June thirtieth and July third. And next select board meeting is July thirteenth. It will be by Zoom again. The fourteenth, of course, of course, is election day. Clerk's office will be closed and the. Twenty seventh is our second. Board meeting in July. Unfortunately, we have to have a second one. Any, anything else anybody has? Other than a motion to adjourn?
You want liaison reports or?
Oh, I'm sorry, liaison reports. Oh, silly man.
I'm happy to adjourn.
Sorry, is are there any?
So moved.
It's fine. I don't have anything breaking on select on.
Anything, Mark?
No, good.
Did we have a little discussion of the planning board's public hearing at our last meeting? I can't remember. Okay.
Yeah, because we took back the the parking exemption.
Right, thank you, yep.
Okay, we're good.
Yep, my motion, we adjourn.
Somebody want a second?
Second.
All right, Doug? Are you in favor?
Yes, I am.
Jeff?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Reluctantly, yes. Guys?
All right.
Thank you all.
Great to see everyone.
Bye.
Bye, thanks, Bill.
Thanks, Bill.